Good evening. Call to order, Tracy take role.
Harrington?
Here.
Pollack?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Wason?
Here.
Thank you. The agenda is before you, I do have an addition under Vintage Estates adding section eight two A, applicant's presentation. So with that, motion to approve, if you would please.
So moved? Seconded?
Moved and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Consent agenda is before you. Any item on there that you would like to discuss before we make, establish a motion on it? Motion would be in order.
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Evan, your time.
Okay, thank you. I'll start with the Southwest Growth Utility Project. We do have a contractor on site now. They have mobilized and they're going to start with the new sanitary sewer at Jones Boulevard and start working west. St. Andrews Drive project, they've prepared most of the subgrade west of the new roundabout. In the next couple of weeks, they'll be placing the sub base rock and paving that west phase. Overall, the contractor, we met with them this morning. Overall, he's estimating that they're three to four weeks behind schedule right now and they're going to try to make up some time. Hopefully they will. Ryan's been in contact with the Clear Creek and Manor School District to update them on the project and the schedule. And we'll continue to do that and keep updating them throughout the construction process. The Aquatic Center HVAC replacement, we had a Zoom progress meeting with them with Apex Construction this morning. No issues, everything's going fine so far. They're, they're planning to start on August 3rd. Actually, they'd like to start a little bit sooner. Guy Goldsmith is going to check with Shelley to see if that's possible. If not, it'll, it'll still be August 3rd, which is the, the planned start date. And the completion on that would be August 31st. And the last update is Ranshaw House Phase Two. This is going to be a really short design schedule. We're, we're trying to get this thing bid in, in August so that the contractor can actually get some work done before winter. So we have started design work and we're planning for the first staff review submittal next Monday. That's all I have tonight unless you have questions for me.
Questions for Kevin, please.
Yeah, Kevin, is the St. Andrews behind because of the weather or because of the, something else?
Well, they, they got two week late start on it, so that, that's two weeks. And that was somewhat related to COVID. The contractor was nervous starting and eventually just said, okay, we're going to go. So they were two weeks behind to start and then the recent, we had that four inch rain, was it two weeks ago? So that's, that's what he's telling us right now.
Any other questions? Thanks, Kevin. Mr. Hyer?
Good evening, just a few things from me. First, COVID related updates since our last meeting. City Hall and the Building Department have now opened, not letting anyone behind the front desk area, but certainly open for customers. And frankly, it's been fairly slow in there. Most people are still relying on the phone and internet to, to do their business. At the community center, our summer program is, is, is off and running with the kids. I think we had thirty-five this week. We anticipate that number to increase throughout the summer. Capacity there is sixty. We started lap swim and that's been real popular, all those, that's by appointment only and that's all been full. And then the announcement we made shortly after the last city council meeting was at the outdoor swimming pool would unfortunately remain closed for the rest of this year. Recreation, the rec, the, the facility itself, the recreation side and the library side are planning to open the week of July 6th. There'll be restrictions in place for that opening. We're, it'll probably be, we're still ironing some of that out, but I know that the library will put a, a cap on how many people they'll allow in there at once. Same with the rec, although they have a couple stories there to, to, to work with. I would just note, and you probably saw the article this week or today, cases in Johnson County are increasing, they've increased every day the last five days. From our staffing standpoint, staff to staff and staff to public, we're keeping our interactions minimal. And we're being vigilant when, in wearing face masks or, or shields when we're working in close quarters or when we're in a, in a room together, but still holding meetings via phone or, or Zoom at this point, at least from a, from a staffing standpoint. So, quick update there. Since our last meeting, been, been working with Jason, with Moxie Solar, Jason Hall on the milestones that we talked a little bit about. So we actually, we're going back and forth today and hope to have something more concrete by the end of the week. Hopefully you'll see an agreement in front of you in, in July. And then lastly, circling back to the, the report that Shai did, or presented two meetings ago, I think now regarding the Quell Creek City Hall facility and a potential new facility. Wanted to let you know a meeting with the owner of that Quell Creek facility here in July. And so as soon as, or after that meeting, I hope to report back to the city council on, on what his plans are for the facility, at which point we may need to make some decisions. So more to come on that. And that's what I have tonight, Mayor.
Questions for Ryan?
Ryan, it's Annie, maybe Ryan or Tracy. Just for all those tuning in, can you just talk about what measures are in place for the summer kids? Just what we're doing for that programming, just to ensure the safety?
Well, at the rec center for the summer camp program, all the kids are required to wear masks, the instructors are wearing masks, they're, they all, instructors and, and children have their temperatures taken daily and a series of, of questions that we ask them to make sure, you know, they don't have any of the symptoms. And then a lot of little things like making sure they're not sharing toys or books or, you know, kind of keep whatever they bring in, they need to keep to themselves and, you know, trying to keep them from tackling each other or horsing around, horseplay type stuff. And so that's, of course, always a challenge, but I think the kids, we have, one, one of the kids actually is a grandkid to one of our staff members and she reports that from, from their standpoint, they think it's, it's going as, as good as can be expected.
Great, thank you.
Ryan, just to piggyback on that, I did touch base here in short order with Ryan. I did receive a couple of concerns about today's post with some wording as far as it, it came from some of the restaurant and business owners in town. I just want to, as a member of council, encourage our residents to heed, heed the caution and the warnings that are being given. Please wear your mask when you're out. Please be respectful of others. Please practice social distancing. But we also want to strike that balance as a city in supporting our, our businesses. They were hit hard early, they were shut down, many of them, and they are really struggling. And we want to support them the best that we can. And just want to encourage everybody to shop local. Please, please do everything that you can to keep your money in our town. The committee that Ryan and I are on, please encourage people to visit icarea-together.com where you'll be seeing some additional press releases where you can buy local and be rewarded for doing so and getting gift certificates for the money that you spend. So want to thank the Communications Department for what they're doing. They're, they're trying their best to strike a delicate balance to inform our residents of the continued dangers that we have with COVID-19, but we also want to be very supportive of our businesses, keep our money in town and do the best we can to keep everybody open. Thanks, Mayor.
Any other questions for Ryan? Mayor's report can underscore the fact that we've been noticing the rates like everybody else as far as climate again, which is very disturbing. And most of them have been under the age of twenty-five from the information we've been able to glean out. We don't know exactly where it's coming from. I don't think they really actually know where it's coming from, why in this group, but it's happening. The thing is, is that this battle is nowhere near over. You've got to keep the social distancing, wear the mask, wear the shield, which is a lot easier if you want to go to a restaurant and eat, for one thing. But the thing is, it's necessary to keep those precautions up. The other thing I wanted to talk to you all about is been trying to look at our first meeting date in July, be back in chambers. But this has thrown a little kink in it, but the thing is, I'm still looking forward to doing that. Within the chambers, we will have social distancing around the desk. However, if you do not feel comfortable in attending in person, other provisions can be made for you to attend and participate in the meeting. So we'll keep monitoring that in the meantime, okay? Vintage Estates, now's the time for a public hearing regarding proposed PAD for Vintage Estates. Anyone present or online wishing to speak in regards to that PAD? Anyone present wishing to speak in regards to that PAD?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. This is Jason Ludden with Snyder and Associates, the civil engineer on the project. And I have Heather Ropp here with me as well with Ewing Development. So we did the civil design on the project. This, this project is, we're looking to go to a PAD due to the density of the units, the proximity of the units, and with a private street in lieu of a public street. We're also proposing private sanitary sewer, water main and storm sewer improvements. As part of the report, I know Ryan had mentioned that there had been some stormwater concerns from Mr. Cameron to the south and to the west. I will say we have met on his property twice and believe we have come to a solution that all parties will agree to and, and be happy with. He will definitely be involved in the construction process as we move forward. I know there were some questions as to what a co-op is, and so I will turn it over to Heather to kind of explain that.
Yes, hi, council. So vintage cooperatives, it's a little bit of a different take on senior housing. It is where it is owned and operated and governed by the membership or those that are living there. So instead of a rental situation like you would see in a lot of typical senior housing around the area, we are building active adult senior housing for fifty-five and above. Our subscribers, our members are buying in to a cooperative that's somewhere between fifty to sixty percent of that full value. And they're essentially shareholders in the cooperative. We have eight cooperatives currently open across the state of Iowa. We have six more in development, one being here in North Liberty that we're proposing. This one is a, is a thirty home, individual home cooperative community with a common area clubhouse. So again, thirty homes in North Liberty, there'd be thirty shareholders and together they own the entire cooperative. So the eight and a half acres and the clubhouse collectively as a membership. This is really meant for maintenance free living. The cooperative takes care of inside maintenance and outside maintenance of the home. And really the big benefit of, of cooperative living is the community. We really bring people together, get them out of the big homes that are a lot of maintenance and a lot of upkeep for them and get them into a situation where absolutely no maintenance and we want them to interact with one another, use that common area clubhouse and invite friends and family in and really enjoy life and enjoy one another.
Any other person wish to speak in regards to this? Tracy, did we have any written objections or notations from the public?
Nothing additional other than the ones that we entered into for the planning commission meeting.
Very good, thank you. Call the public hearing to close. Planning Commission's staff recommendations, Mr. Rusnick.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I would add is we had a good neighbor meeting on February 27th. There was an opportunity for public input at that time. As mentioned, planning commission had a public hearing on May 5th. We had a Zoom meeting at that time. And so I would just add, as Jason mentioned, that the proposed design is, is a result of a cooperative effort between two, the applicant and the adjacent landowner. And so at the May 5th meeting, the planning commission unanimously recommended approval subject to eight conditions. Those eight conditions are listed on the ordinance for the rezoning. Four of those conditions already have been addressed and the other four would be addressed prior to or at the time of construction. And so staff does recommend approval. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Any questions for Ryan? Thanks, Ryan. Applicants' presentation, get a final shot at them if you want. Questions for the applicants?
I have a question, Mayor. As far as size of the units, are they all relatively the same size in terms of space and square footage?
Yeah, so these homes, they're going to be individual homes. There are four different floor plans to choose from. So they started around fourteen hundred square feet and they go up to just under two thousand square feet. So four floor plans and they all have a real clean, modern craftsman style exterior to them. So we've got four floor plans and then each floor plan has, it's a couple different elevations to choose from. So this community will be very cohesive, but it will be, there'll be different variations in the roof lines and, and the siding colors and some of the stonework.
Hey, Rukisha? Other questions for the folks?
Yeah, I had a few, Mayor. Thanks for letting us know about this here, you guys. The, I'm interested in a couple of things and I realize that this is probably going to be the only time we get a shot at this thing since it's a rezoning, but it's also a PAD, so we need to address the, the siding on it at the same time. How does the ownership work? I, I, I heard that the owners own it, but Heather, I think I heard you say just a few minutes ago that it's going to be something that the owners can own up to fifty to sixty percent of their value on it. Are they the entire owners or do, does your organization own part ownership in this cooperative as well?
Yep, good question. So the financial structure of a cooperative is, is in the, in the beginning, the, the members are buying in a, the share and that shares fifty to sixty percent of the full value. The remaining part of that, the other, you know, fifty-five, forty-five, fifty-five percent is, is wrapped into a master mortgage. And then once the membership, the owners move into their community, there is a monthly fee that goes along with them living there. And, and part of that monthly fee is going toward that master mortgage. So essentially, the longer they live there, they're going to pay that master mortgage down. If they live there long enough, they could pay off that master mortgage and then this would be a full market rate essentially property. So instead of when they go to resale in the future, they're going to, their resale value is going to be higher. They can choose to refinance anytime throughout the project. The membership then takes control of, of the, of the master mortgage, they're the shareholders. They, they elect a, a member board, they govern themselves. So it's, it's up to them how that works, but they essentially will own the property. They're never going to own an outright title like a single family home, but they will all own a share of this property together. So thirty homes, thirty shareholders.
Okay. And nobody else outside of the shareholders, these thirty will be part of the ownership?
That is correct, yep.
What happens i- if someone passes away or if they, they choose to leave or to sell or to move out? How does that happen?
Yep, so we have them sign an occupancy agreement prior to move in and in that occupancy agreement, they can title their share in a trust, a life estate, a TOD, transfer on death, they can set that up however they would like. We will have a housing manager that is going to actively be communicating with our waitlist people, the public. We're going to host marketing events, open houses to really keep the, the interest in the community alive. So when there is an opening or a resale, we've got somebody ready to move in and come into that community. So the resale process is quite simple, it's all handled by our management company. And again, we market to that active prospect, the waitlist people that have said, I want to be notified when there's an opening in your community.
Okay, thank you. I've got a couple of other questions if you guys don't mind, and I have to flip back and forth to my screen, so if I go dark, that's why I'm going away. How, how are taxes paid? Is it from the cooperative then or do all thirty owners pay taxes? I guess it's revenue. How is this taxed differently than a regular homeowner?
Yep, so this is also rolled into that monthly fee. So property taxes are going to be divided up based on the square footage of, of their home there. So those property taxes on the entire eight and a half acres is divided up amongst the shareholders. So it's wrapped into that monthly fee.
Okay, so then, does that come from the cooperative itself as a whole or from thirty different taxpayers then inside of that?
Cooperative as a whole.
Okay. The, just last, two last questions for you. And, and again, this was something that either you or Jason brought up a moment ago. I, I assume that you're connected to city water, city sewer, all of those things, or did I misunderstand that?
No, that is correct. We will be connecting to city utilities in Jones Boulevard.
Okay, that's what I thought I read in the, the part of the fee there. The last question I have for you is kind of an aesthetics thing. Can you tell me a little bit why a gate is necessary? I know that this was asked at the P and Z meeting, kind of not hammered hard, but can you tell me the reason why? Is it an aesthetics thing? Is it a safety concern? Is it part of the exclusivity? Does it keep people out of there? I guess it's partly all of those, but what is the attraction of having a gate?
I can touch on this and then I don't know if, if our, our CEO is also on, on today's call too and he can chime in as well, but we just think, you know, it does add that exclusivity to this. This is a community where we want people to be out and about, we want them to walk, you know, get out there, be active with one another outside their homes, we want them to bring in their dogs, you know, their pets, really enjoy the community and just control the, the traffic coming through there. We know this, we really want this to be a private, private community with the private drive and just for safety concerns, that's the gate. And it's also attractive that you're not going to have just the general public driving through there, you know, all hours of the night.
Okay, that, that does lead me to two other questions and I apologize. What is the, Ryan Rusnick, I think you mentioned this in your report, that what's the, what's the reasoning that we don't require open spaces requirements in this particular area now? Because as Heather said, they're going to be out walking, but there doesn't seem to be anywhere to walk except on their, on their driveway.
Yeah, so in, in the PAD, in this specific zoning classification, open space is not required by code. And so what they are providing is sidewalk links to the, to the public sidewalks that are available along Jones Boulevard, they can get into Cory Court and those types of amenities. But, but by ordinance, it's, it's not required internally for this.
Okay. And the last one for now, I promise, Jason or Heather, what's the, what's the market rate for this? Can you give us a comparison on how much a, a home there is going to cost in totality, both in that master mortgage and also their, their buying shares and what's they'll have, again, compared to a traditional mortgage?
Well, I'll just, I'll give you kind of the price ranges of their share price. So their share price is what they're paying us. And then the rest of that would be in a master mortgage. So if we, if we kind of just go through the range here, our, our smallest home is just under fourteen hundred square feet, that's about two hundred and forty thousand dollars. And then our largest home at two thousand square feet is about three hundred and forty-four thousand. So that's the range. And again, this is a little different than a single family home because you're not just owning the home, you're also owning a part of that eight and a half acres in that clubhouse. So it's a little, little different to do an, an apples, apples comparison with what's out there. But that's kind of that range of that share price or the purchase price that our membership is, is purchasing upfront. And then these, these prices also appreciate. So a little different of appreciation schedule than a single family home. They appreciated a more conservative rate at about a rate of one and a half percent annually. And we set up that financial structure so ease of resale can happen in the future for, for new buyers wanting to come in. There's a, a lower entry point for them.
Okay, so you said that mortgage, or not the mortgage, you said the two hundred and forty thousand dollar or three forty-four of those examples, those were the share prices? And then is there a master mortgage on top of that then that they're responsible for as part of the co-op?
Yep, so let's, I mean, about two hundred and forty-one is about fifty-four to fifty-six of the full value. And then the rest of that, on top of that share price is rolled into a master mortgage, so.
So you're looking at, would it be, would it be reasonable to say, take these dollar amounts and maybe nearly double them for, for a home? So you've got the fourteen hundred square foot home that's going to basically have like a four hundred and eighty thousand dollar value to it? Okay?
So again, the home and then the eight and a half acres and then a share of that clubhouse as well is all rolled into this.
So how do you, how do you pay taxes or are you assessed then if you're only doing it a one and a half percent appreciation, but let's say property value around you goes up ten percent in a year?
So that's the great thing about a cooperative is that membership's going to elect a, a board. That board will also have a finance committee and that's decisions they get to make as a cooperative together. If they say, hey, our, our, our shares are falling below market rate, they can adjust their appreciation percentage annually on an annual basis as they get together as a committee and, and make those decisions.
Thank you. I'll stop monopolizing this, thanks, guys.
No problem.
Any other questions for the vendors, please?
Mayor, I have one. Chris hit on a number of mine. I got the questions answered on the gate that I had prior to the meeting, so thanks for, for doing that, staff. Who is, who is ultimately responsible for the upkeep and maintenance of all of the houses in the common areas? You know, over time, ten years from now, you know, as things start to get some age on them, is, is part of that monthly maintenance or that monthly fee maintenance into every property where new roofs have to go on or those, the, the responsibility of the individual owners? And who, who kind of polices that if one of them starts to get run down?
Yep, great question. So also in that monthly fee, they're paying toward a, a reserve fund. And that, that reserve fund is for, you know, when, when the community starts to age and, and things need to replace windows, roofing, whatever, they have a fund in place. We, we set up really healthy reserves in the beginning and as those reserves build up and that community ages, then their membership has resources available to make those changes. There is a, there's kind of three staff associated with this community. There's a housing manager, there's a maintenance technician, and then there's also a common area housekeeper that takes care of that clubhouse. But again, the, the membership really is there to, to watch for, you know, things on the property that need addressed. So if they see that gate is, you know, needing tightened up or if they see, you know, something in the community room that needs addressed, there's a maintenance request form that they can fill, fill out and submit to the housing manager and those, those issues are addressed.
Thank you.
I, I just have one, one more question. Just in terms of requesting maintenance, are you all planning to work within a certain company or a group that they're going to be able to select from or is that done on their behalf?
It just depends on what it is for. So if it's electrical work or plumbing, their board can select a licensed bonded and insured contractor to come in and do that work. Not just anybody can come in and do work on that site. It has to be accepted, the work has to be accepted by the board. It has to be accepted, the work has to be accepted by the board and approved for that vendor, that contractor to be onsite to do the work.
Mayor, I've got one more.
Please.
So I think, Chris, you answered most of my, or asked most of my questions. But one thing too, so just anyone listening, I think this is a a great alternative option in our community for housing. A different option. This was something that came out of the Spark event. We had, within the last calendar year here. So I think just, yes, high price for sure, high value, but something different, interesting in the community for those fifty five plus. So I think that's good, as we're continuing to look at different options for our seniors within our community.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, just got a question. Can you explain how your age requirements work?
Sure, so our communities are fifty five and better. Although there is a state rule that eighty percent of the membership needs to meet the fifty five plus requirement. The other twenty percent need to be over the age of eighteen. We also do financially qualify everybody to live there. They have to have a minimum annual gross income. So as as long as that person applying for membership meets the criteria, then they can be accepted into the membership.
But it doesn't restrict, so that restricts the owners, but not the people who are living there?
It's the occupancy agreement is is also tied into into that as well.
So if you had somebody who was fifty five and they're, so they couldn't have somebody that was younger, you know, if they had like grandchildren living with them or something?
So we do have a lot, in our other buildings that are open, we do have grandkids that come and visit and stay even for the summer months. But if it starts getting into a long-term situation where they're they're there, you know, four plus months at a time, then that has to go to the board for approval, and then it's determined from there on. You know, there are circumstances where, you know, we can't discriminate if it's the grandparent becomes a legal guardian of a child. There are special circumstances that we work under as well. But this is really meant to be a fifty five plus adult community.
So the thing I worry about is, you know, I see a lot of, you know, grandparents here that are, you know, having to pick up and take their children's kids and be their guardians because of, you know, things that happen to them and stuff, so.
Yep, yep, and that's something that, you know, we just can't discriminate against, and we work on those situations. But it's, we we've even had, you know, people, family members going through hardship, and they'll they'll live with their parents. You know, for a certain number of months, just to get back on their feet again, and that's fine. But when we start getting into very long months at a time, it goes for the board for approval. And then an occupancy agreement would be signed by those new people living in the community. So each each situation's a little different.
And so the owners would not have the opportunity to like sublease?
Nope, so our our communities are member-owned and member-occupied. We don't have any that have ever become rentals. They're not set up that way. Again, though, once, once the board is in place, and and they do have the first right, a cooperative does, has the first right to purchase a unit in that cooperative, and if they choose and vote to make them a rental, I guess that's up to that membership. It all operates individually than one another, but we have never seen that in any of our communities. And it's it's very rarely done in co-op housing. It's it's really member-owned, member-occupied.
And then one building is one vote? Is that kind of outrun?
You got it.
Yes.
Other questions or comments? Thank you. Mr. Lance, as we consider the first reading, is there any special voting procedures we have to do on this?
Yes, Mayor, I understand that we have a a written objection from a neighbor that has not yet been withdrawn in writing. And so this would require a vote of three quarters of council, so four out of five eyes to to pass.
Thank you. Asking if anyone would like to establish the first consideration of ordinance twenty twenty dash zero two. In ordinance amending chapter one sixty seven North Liberty Code of Ordinances. By amending the use regulations on property located at one seventy five South Jones Boulevard. Anyone wish to establish that first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussions or questions?
Just a couple of procedural questions, Mayor. This is going to be three readings for this?
Yes.
Okay, and will we, we're going to require the objectors written release of his objection prior to all of these readings, or just the by the time the third one rolls around?
Mr. Lance?
Uh, depends on whether the votes are there or not. So if it, if the objection is withdrawn between now and the second reading, then the next, the next reading would only require a majority vote, right? If if the written objection objection is not rescinded, you know, in the three readings, then each vote would require a three-quarter majority, is my understanding.
And if we simply table this motion or choose not to go forward with it, can we pick this back up with our first reading at our next meeting? If that objection is received in writing?
If you want to move to table this item to a later date, that's that is within the the council's power to do.
But we're in the discussion for a motion that's been first and second. We only have the choice of voting aye or nay at this point in time on it. If we vote this down, can this be brought to the table next council meeting?
You can move to table this definitely to a at this point without voting up or down. You can, we can move to vote this. You can move to table this que- this question that's pending to the to a date certain.
Okay. I would like to make that motion to table this conversation until the objection has been received in writing. Until the objection has been withdrawn in writing, pardon me.
Is there a second to the tabling?
I have a second.
You'll make a second?
Yes.
Okay. Since tabling is non-debatable, Tracy, take roll.
Wayson?
No, I do not want to table it.
Smith?
Nay.
Harrington?
Yeah, aye, I mean, yes.
Pollock?
Nay.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Motion to table fails, two affirmative, three opposed. First consideration is still on the table. You ready to vote? Tracy?
Hoffman?
Nay.
Wayson?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Harrington?
I think your feed froze.
Suspenseful.
It is.
Rakesha? Annie, what's your vote?
Did you ask mine, Mayor?
Yes.
Aye.
This puts a strange duck in the whole thing.
There's a first for everything.
Okay, maybe she'll try to get back on here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll wait for a couple minutes. Mr. Lance, if the fifth vote cannot be cast, where do we stand?
I'm working on that right now. I think I might be saved by the bell here, if Councilor Harrington has returned.
Rakesha?
I'm sorry, I don't know what.
That's all right, no problem. The vote is yours. Aye to take to pass it, or nay not to pass?
Nay.
First consideration fails, three affirmative, two opposed. Next item is zoning ordinance. This will be the third consideration, adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero three. An ordinance amending chapter one sixty seven Code of Ordinances in North Liberty. Also amending section one sixty seven oh one, section one seventy three, section one seventy three oh two, section one seventy three oh five. Anyone wish to establish the third and final consideration?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving seconded. Does any discussion or questions? Tracy, please.
Harrington?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Wayson?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Chair hears five affirmative, none opposed, third and final reading passes. Next item, Ms. Tiana?
Hello.
Bond sale, what information do you have for us, please?
Okay, so today we sold ten million one sixty in general obligation bonds. Those were sold for two purposes. Part of it is to be financed through tax increment collections. And the other part is from the levy. It's twelve years of payments, I'm sorry, twelve-year term, I think eleven payments. We got five bids from banks across the country. The TIC, which is the true interest cost, was one point three six percent. I think that we had estimated around one forty five, so we did even better than that. That's very similar. Grimes did a sale back on the ninth of June. They are also double A two, and their rate was one thirty five. But actually, rates have gone up a few basis points since then, so you know, you're pretty much right in the ballpark. Your last sale, if you're interested, last year around this time was a one sixty two. So you're continuing to drive down your rate, which is great. You did affirm the double A two rating from Moody's once again. They keep saying the same things about you, which is that the double A two reflects your growing tax base, your strong population, your healthy financial profile, and your reserves. We lobbied hard for an upgrade. I think we do every time we talk. And I think that the consistent response is that they just need to see more valuation. Generally speaking, among double A twos, you have a little bit smaller tax base. They say those, the things that could lead to an upgrade are maintenance of strong reserves and a continued growth in your tax base. I think they were very impressed with the way you've been handling the situation. We talked a lot about the fact that North Liberty is economically flexible and viable to withstand all that's been going on. So it was Baird that presented the lowest TIC, and I would recommend that you do a word to them. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
And who are the winning bidders?
It's Robert W. Baird. Do you have, Tracy, do they have the tabulation of bids that I sent over?
They do not.
Oh, okay, so I I can take a crack at sharing my screen. I've never done that before. We'll see what happens. Okay, can you see this? Is this helpful, or am I making things worse?
Derek, can you help us share a screen?
Okay, so I think I'm, I think I'm sharing.
Yep.
But the question is, what am I sharing? Do you see something that says North Liberty tabulation of bids?
Yes.
Okay.
Maybe make it smaller.
I can make it smaller. So these were the bids that were received. Robert W. Baird at one point three six, Key Bank at one point five one, D.A. Davidson at one point six seven, Morgan Stanley at one point seven, and J.P. Morgan at one point seven eight. So interesting that there was quite a spread in high to low bid, forty basis points. We don't normally see it be that extensive, but you know, the economy is a little strange. And but, you know, very good reception, I think, and I'm really pleased with the one thirty six. So Tracy, do, does the mayor have the bid form to sign that I sent over?
We are not in the same location, Tiana, so he does not.
Do you have it?
I do. He will get it. He will get it as soon as we get together in person. It'll be taken care of.
Okay, perfect. So are there any questions on this?
A question for Tiana. Nice work again, kid.
Well, thank you. I don't know how to stop. Okay, am I stopping? I think I stopped sharing.
Good job.
Therefore, have resolution number twenty twenty dash fifty three. A resolution authorized and approving a loan agreement providing for the sale and issuance of general obligation purpose bond series twenty twenty A, and providing for the levy of taxes to pay for the same to Robert W. Baird, correct? Got it. Who would like to establish that resolution?
Let's do that.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Final discussion or questions?
Thank you, Tiana.
You're welcome. It's my pleasure.
Great work, team. This is a great rate. We should really be proud of this. This is a good one.
Thank you for your help.
Tracy, take roll.
Pollock?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Wayson?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Resolution passes five affirmative, none opposed. Thank you once again.
Thank you. I'm going to stick around for the next one, just in case.
Okay.
I want to hear.
Water rate update. This will be the second consideration of ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero four. An ordinance amending chapter twenty ninety two oh two, entitled Rates for Service, for the municipal code of North Liberty by adopting a new section ninety point ninety two point oh two to increase the charges for water used. Anyone wish to establish the second consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion or questions? Tracy?
Smith?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Wayson?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Chair heard five affirmative, none opposed, second consideration is passed. Item twelve, fiscal twenty twenty one wages, resolution number twenty twenty dash fifty four. Resolution authorizing salaries and hourly wages for city employees for the fiscal year of July one, twenty twenty through June thirty, twenty twenty one. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion or questions? Tracy, please.
Wayson?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Chair hears five affirmative, none opposed, declared passed. Mowing assessment, resolution number twenty twenty dash fifty five. Resolution assessing delinquent amounts owed to the City of North Liberty, Iowa, to individual property taxes. Anyone wish to establish that resolution, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions?
Ryan, either Ryans, could you guys tell us how you arrive at this fee? It's been a while since we've explained this one. This is, these have been two kind of long lots. They all didn't obviously get mowed, but I They all didn't obviously get mowed, but I think it's kind of the same rate. Can you give us any guidance on that?
Yeah, I can jump in here. I mean, we're just, we're just passing on the rate that, that we get. We don't, our Parks Department doesn't do this. We hired out and they sent us a bill and we collect.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Tracy, take roll.
Smith?
Aye.
Pollack?
Aye.
Wason?
We lost him. No, there he is. Aye? Yes, I vote.
Harrington?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Chair recognizes five affirmative and none opposed. Resolution passes. CDBG grant agreement, summer lunch and fun. Tracy, give them the lowdown.
Absolutely. With the school districts providing lunches, Quirky Command is ending at the end of June. Iowa City, I think, may be going on through the rest of the summer. The program still decided that there was a need, the committee that operates the program, decided that there was a need still. School district is kind of leaving a pocket in the middle of town where folks may not have transportation nor may not have a school connection. So the lunch program is providing sack lunches for carryaway Monday through Friday. We're partnering with a local caterer to help make that happen. Two staff people were hired, two staff people have resigned, but neither here nor there. The program is providing takeaway activity packets each week as well. So when the CDBG grant was available for the daycare program, we reached out to see if it could be available for the summer lunch and fun program. So we were awarded $14,400 to provide lunches and activities for the eight weeks of summer. So that's what this grant will do.
Questions for Tracy? This will be resolution number 2020-56. Resolution approving the community development block grant agreement between City of North Liberty and the Iowa Economic Development Authority for the summer lunch program. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion or questions? Tracy, please.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Pollack?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Chair hears five affirmative, none opposed, resolution deemed passed. Number 15. Chapter 180 ordinance regarding minimum low openings on plant requirement. Grant, can you just give them an overview of what's really being said and done?
Sure. I provided a little memo that I think is in the packet. These were, it looks like we're doing these in reverse order. There were three ordinance amendments that were requested by our building department. This one is having to do with a minimum low opening table. It is something that we have historically required on subdivision plats. A minimum low opening is how low can you have a window or other opening in your house before water is going to come in? And we put those normally on, on each lot for, for subdivision plats. But the problem is that the state law says what can be on a subdivision plat and that's not it. We're still requiring that information. It's very good information for builders and potential buyers to have about the property. But we're, all this ordinance is doing is taking it off the plat and putting it onto a separate chart. It still has to be signed off on by a licensed engineer and Mr. Trom. Can you keep me honest on that? Am I missing anything relevant? I'll give you lots of time to unmute while I'm finishing this sentence.
No, that sounds accurate.
Thank you. That's, that's all I have for this one, Mayor.
Thank you. Now's the time for a public hearing regarding the proposed ordinance amendment. Anyone present or online that may wish to speak in regards to this? Hearing none. Any public comment? Written comment?
None was received.
Thank you. Call the public hearing to a close. This will be the first consideration of ordinance number 2020-05. An ordinance amending the minimum low opening requirements of the North Liberty Code of Ordinances. Anyone wish to establish the first consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Final discussion or questions? Tracy, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Harrington?
You were just unmuted, Rakesha.
Yes, no?
I can see her lips moving, saying aye.
You're not frozen. You just need to be unmuted, I think. Yep.
Did you hear me? Aye?
Aye, thank you.
Okay, there we go.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Chair recognizes five affirmative, none opposed, first reading deemed passed.
Mayor, I'm actually vote.
I missed you. I messed it up.
Pollack?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So should we change it to five and a half or what?
Somebody voted twice.
Also got five. Number 16. Chapters 14605 ordinance regarding the rental permit guest. Grant, I have to call on you again.
I'll make it quick. This time technically, if you have someone over for dinner at your house, you need a rental permit for that. That's probably not what was intended. And so the, this is modifying the definition of guest or including the definition of guest as someone who's residing in someplace for more than 15 days so that we don't need rental permits for everybody who comes over to your house. Just an oversight and a very minor thing, but wanted to include that.
Thank you. Now's the time for a public hearing in regards to the proposed ordinance amendment. Anyone online that wishes to speak in regards to this? Did we receive any written comments, Tracy?
No.
Call the public hearing to a close. This will be the first consideration of ordinance number 2020-06. An ordinance amending the rental permit requirements of the North Liberty Code of Ordinances. Anyone wish to establish first consideration?
I'm moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Final discussion or questions? Tracy, please.
Pollack?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Chair recognizes five.
Smith?
Aye, no name. First consideration passes. Number 17, chapter 9023, ordinance regarding backflow customer responsibilities. Grant, please.
The hope is that this will be the last year I have to bring serial backflow ordinance amendments to you. There was a provision that was confusing as to who was responsible for providing reporting that the city relies on to determine who's updated their backflow and had it inspected every year. This ordinance amendment is intended to clarify that, who a customer is, who the service provider is and what their respective responsibilities are under the ordinance.
Thank you. Now's the time for a public hearing in regards to the proposed ordinance amendment. Anyone online wishing to speak in regards to the amendment? Any written comments on such, Tracy?
None received.
Public hearing is closed. This will be the first consideration of ordinance number 2020-07. An ordinance clarifying customer and contractor responsibilities for backflow prevention device inspection and reporting. Anyone wish to establish the first consideration?
So moved. This is for you, Grant, second.
Is that for Grant too or? Moved and seconded. Questions? Take roll, please.
Pollack?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Chair recognizes 5A, no names. First consideration is declared passed. Number 18, chapter 50.07. Ordinance regarding nuisance ordinance scrivener's error. You want to let us know what a scrivener is?
It's a typo. It's a lawyer's version of a typo. It just clarifies what chapter someone can find a municipal infraction ordinance within our, within our code. It's referenced in our nuisance ordinance and that's important for code compliance.
Thank you. Now's the time for public hearing regarding proposed ordinance amendment. Did we receive anybody online wishing to make comment? Any written comments?
None were received.
Public hearing is closed. First consideration of ordinance number 2020-08. Ordinance correcting a scrivener's error in chapter 50 of the North Liberty's Code of Ordinances. Anyone wish to establish the first consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion or questions? Tracy?
Smith?
Aye.
Pollack?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Chair recognizes five ayes, no nays. First consideration deemed passed. 19, chapter 4107, ordinance regarding toy guns. Grant?
Yeah, this one, it seems like it's a big deal, but it's, it's actually a little less than, than it might seem. The, right now and for many years, there has been a toy gun ordinance on the books. This ordinance does not seek to change anything that is restricted. For, for a long time, it has been, you cannot fire a slingshot or BB gun without council permission. You can't possess them. Right now, you can't possess those things anywhere in town and you can't give them to someone else or to your child. Following a series of Supreme Court decisions concerning the right to bear arms and what the definition of arms are, I think that a citywide prohibition on the, on the possession of any of those things is probably difficult for me to prosecute in court. And so I, I think a narrower tailored version of this that restricts possession of those things to city property might more have a clear valid public purpose in light of the Second Amendment's requirements. And so I can answer questions on that. I think we had a number that were in the, in the packet that were useful. But not trying to change anything other than where something that is already prohibited is prohibited. I went, I went to school for a long time and I talked like that. Sorry, everybody.
Anyone would like to ask Grant ahead of time questions?
No, just appreciate you kind of writing that out and I like that little, last little explanation.
Now's the time for a public hearing in regards to the proposed ordinance amendment. Anybody online wish to speak to that ordinance amendment? Did we receive any comment on such?
None were received.
Cleared public hearing closed. This will be the first consideration of ordinance number 2020-09. Ordinance amending chapter 41 in the North Liberty Code of Ordinances. Anyone wish to establish toy gun ordinance?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion or questions? Please take roll.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Pollack?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Chair recognizes five ayes, no nays. First consideration deemed passed. Number 20, ordinance 40.03. Ordinance regarding disorderly conduct. Mr. Lance, back to you again.
Sure. Last year, federal court struck down Iowa's state statute concerning disorderly conduct with respect to speech. Protesters outside Emma Goldman Clinic asked the court to say, hey, I don't know whether my conduct is going to fall within these bounds or not, and the court said, yeah, you have no way of knowing whether what you're doing is illegal or not. And so it's unconstitutionally vague to have a statute that prohibits certain kinds of conduct without there being an intent associated with it. So you could accidentally violate this, the state statute and be, and face a criminal penalty and that was unconstitutional. Our ordinance, as it's written, reflects the language in the state statute. It needs to be changed in order to incorporate an intent element, whether that is I'm doing it on purpose or I'm being reckless about whether I'm doing this. That, some sort of element needs to be there in order for us to be able to enforce this. I've also, there's another minor change having to do with the fighting words doctrine. I doubt it's ever been charged, let alone enforced, but it's one part. As long as I'm in an ordinance and I'm making change or recommending changes, I'm looking at the rest of that ordinance. And so the fighting words doctrine requires an imminent threat. And so I have added language regarding imminence of a threat getter. Or is a, you know, if it's really going to hurt somebody, that might not be protected speech under the First Amendment. And then lastly, paragraph six in here is having to do with disrespecting a flag. And the United States Supreme Court, despite, as repeatedly held, that ordinances of that kind are a violation of symbolic speech protected by the First Amendment. So I'm recommending, in order to be able to cite people for loud parties and to avoid lawsuits on having unconstitutional stuff on our books, I recommend this, this amendment.
Thank you. Now's the time for a public hearing regarding the proposed ordinance amendment regarding 40.03. Anyone online wishing to make comment? Any written comments, Tracy?
None were received.
Call the public hearing to a close. This will be the first consideration of ordinance 2020-10. Ordinance amending chapter 40.03, North Liberty Code of Ordinances. Anyone wish to establish this?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Final discussion or questions? Annie? I saw your light on. Okay. Tracy, take roll.
Wason?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Pollack?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Chair recognizes five affirmative and none opposed, first consideration deemed passed. Old business. New business.
Yeah, can we just take a second and I want to talk about this Vantage Estates thing that we just did or did not do. So it's my understanding from Ryan and Kevin that Mr. Cameron does not object to it. This is not written and an objection to it.
Yeah, I'd be happy to talk about that and I didn't want to interject that there was a motion on the floor in a second. And so I didn't want to interject at that time. So what happened was Harold Cameron submitted his written objection prior to the Plan and Zoning Commission meeting. And before the, the Planning Commission voted to, basically what the applicant said is let's table, let's have a series of meetings. So there was two onsite meetings between the applicant, the engineer and Harold Cameron. And it came out to this revised plan that, that I thought it was very much mutually agreeable. As we went through this process and one of the conditions for the Planning Commission approval was because stormwater was such a big concern that the applicant demonstrated consistency with the city's stormwater runoff ordinance prior to it moving to city council. So that's why there was such a delay between the May Planning Commission meeting and the city council meeting. Cause it took a number of times for them to submit plans. We would review it, provide them comments. And it wasn't till most recently that we felt as a staff that it met our ordinance. Now, as soon as we, as soon as I kind of had that indication from Kevin, we forwarded that to Harold. Harold didn't review it. I called him on Monday and said, hey, you know, did you have a chance to review this? He missed the email and so what we did, Kevin and I, we met with Harold this morning at his property, laid, laid the plans out on the hood of the car and just kind of went through it and, and you know, we were able to talk through him with all the engineering details of how the site was going to work. At that time, Mr. Harold indicated to me that the only, the only, I don't want to call objection, but the only concern, there was only two concerns that he had. One was a drain tile on. One was a drain tile and, on, in a swale on the west side of the property that diverts the water coming from his property around the app, the applicant's property. And the, the only, and the only reason he raised a concern was the depths aren't quite known of what that drain tile is, and that may affect the placement of that. So that's, that's really a construction thing you would discover in the field and adjust. And the other thing that he raised was, was the gate at the entrance that somebody may have to back out. So when I asked Mr. Cameron, I said, you know, I, I would expect the city council to ask me, uh, are you generally in favor with, with this design? Uh, you know, with the exception of those two things that I mentioned, and, and he, he stated yes. So I, I apologize. I, I should have provided that much detail. Um, but I thought that was conveyed in some of the written material we had provided.
Brian, I thought you did an excellent job in the explanation. I knew exactly what had happened. Exactly as you just explained it prior to this meeting in reading prior to the meeting. I personally am disappointed in the way this went down. There's been a lot of work put in with that landowner. He showed, uh, the verbal agreement. I just think that it was a timing thing that he did not remove of the objection in time. And I certainly hope, uh, that this developer comes back to us, uh, because this is a viable alternative of housing in our community.
I, I do think we have some, an option tonight, and I'm not going to play attorney, so I'll, I'll, um, I'll turn it over to Grant, but, uh, can we talk about the, if they would like to reconsider how that process works?
If they have a motion for reconsideration, it has to come from one of the bodies that, one vote.
Yes, and so that's a little strange here because, uh, the, the rule actually says that, uh, the motion must be made only by a member who voted in the majority in the original motion. Now, we did have a three-member majority. Um, but the super majority was required to pass. Um, the rules go on to state that if a member has a change of heart, they may make a motion to reconsider. Um, I, I don't have a magic wand, um, but I, I think you would, uh, you could have a motion to suspend the rules. Um, and then a motion to reconsider. That would be, um, so that, so that a, a non-moving party, uh, or a person, regardless of who, who made the vote the first time around, could make a motion since, since they're contradictory. Neither, neither the three or the two under the rules could make that vote, but you need a vote to suspend the rules with respect to that. And then someone, if, if so does, if you so chose, could make a motion to reconsider, notwithstanding that uh, rule change. And then you could have discussion on whether, uh, or not the motion to reconsider would pass. And at that point, then the original item will be back up for, for consideration. It would still require another four, uh, vote majority.
Yeah, I think in the council rules, it leaves it open for reconsideration at any time.
Just this meeting.
Just this meeting.
Only this meeting.
So do we still have to suspend the rules in order to do it if it's already written the council rules?
Uh, well, what I'm saying, Mayor, is, is that who can make that motion is in our, is someone in the majority, but also someone who has changing their, who was, has a change of heart. Um, and so um, it, it's, I, I, I think if we're being very careful, the, the best way to be a motion to change the rule, to suspend the rules with respect to who can make a motion reconsider in this instance. And then a, a motion to reconsider could come from any of the five council members.
So that gets kind of convoluted a little bit. So I just, you know, I, I, I don't, from what I read, I just got this, read this little email, as I've got like four screens up here that, uh, later in the, it was sent later today that looked like Mr. Cameron really didn't object to it. And then
Right.
kind of got around there and stuff. So I'm not, you know, I, if Chris or, or Patricia has like, you know, some concern that he's not okay with it, then, then that's where we go. And then we kind of start all over again, as it were. But, you know, if it was just be that we don't, we didn't quite understand that it sounds like Mr. Cameron agrees to it, then maybe we should, you know, reconsider.
Yeah, and I, I would add that if there's an opportunity to, if there is an opportunity, you know, should the council see fit to move it forward? Right? The council can move it forward all the way through this process with a super majority. I'm not saying that, that's what you should do, but you could do that. Uh, also, if there's an opportunity to move it forward, then, then that gives us a little bit of time to uh, ask Harold, you know, we, we, we've got the plan here that you verbally agreed to. Are you willing to rescind uh, your, your written, um, objection? And, and that's the only reason why in this point the super majority is required is because we just didn't get it in writing to say, I withdraw that objection.
And I would add if we, uh, if it, if it isn't reconsidered, uh, and remains as is, it's going to have to start back from the beginning of the process, which I believe goes all the way back to the Good Neighbor meeting, right? So we're pushing that out probably another sixty days.
I, can, can I say that I would like to reconsider? I'm not sure what decision we just made on the, the proper steps for that. Um, I would have to agree that I do think that this is a great opportunity um, in alternative in housing, um, for our community. And with that additional information, I didn't have a chance to read that last email prior to our meeting, um, this evening, so that um, information helped, and I just went back and, and looked at it too. So it makes more sense um, as well that it was a verbal agreement that he understood, and he had those two concerns. So
Do you want to make a motion to suspend the rules?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Is there a second?
I'll second, man.
Discussion of questions? Tracy, take roll.
Pollock.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Harrington.
Aye.
Motion is declared passed. Five affirmative, none opposed.
And now any, any member of the council may make a motion to reconsider if they choose.
Okay. Like to have a motion to reconsider if you would like to.
I would like to make a motion to reconsider.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions?
Patricia, thank you. Thank you for, uh, for speaking to that. We appreciate that, that honesty.
Yeah, so Chris, or I, I just kind of worry what Chris is worried about, because when Chris worries about something, I worry about something.
Thanks, Brian. I, I think that was the reason why I, on, uh, I should, I should back up. I do see, uh, Ryan, all of the work that you've done, and I did get that email this afternoon. And I know that this has been a long drawn out process. Uh, I'm not in favor of moving forward on something in a super majority if we don't have agreement from, uh, our, um, our residents, our property owners in the city. So, uh, that is forthcoming. It could be in your hands tomorrow morning. Uh, I would have hoped that you would have taken the agreement with you this afternoon or this morning when you met with him and had his autograph on it at that point in time. Uh, we wouldn't have had to have this conversation yet to end the evening. That is why I asked if we could table this until the next meeting. Uh, I'm still not going to be in favor of approving this until we have Mr. Cameron's written, uh, withdrawal. Uh, I think it goes against the spirit of, uh, what we do for our residents here. That being said, you've done a lot of work, and I do not want this to go back to February. Um, so feel free, uh, to super majority this one over me to keep, keep the ball rolling, and that's simply why I wanted to table this because I don't want to go back to February. And the next, the next time though, Ryan, I want this to be something that you guys get in writing while you're there with, uh, with Mr. Cameron or with someone in the future. Um, because waiting on someone like that, um, you know, obviously caused a lot of delay here and a lot more conversation. Uh, I did read everything that you did, and you did a lot of great work. You guys have put a lot of time into this thing. Uh, let's just dot this i.
Tracy, take roll. Motion to reconsider.
Wason.
Aye.
Hoffman.
Nay.
Smith.
Aye.
Harrington.
Aye.
Pollock.
Aye.
Motion to reconsider passes for affirmative, one opposed. Grant?
All, all but now the original item is back on, up for consideration again. So you did, you did need to, we just needed a majority to reconsider. We would need to, to, uh, so now the initial, uh, item, what a, what a mess, right? Now the initial item is up for discussion one final time. If, if, and you'd have to have a, a motion to approve it or reject it and then seconded and then discussion and so on, just like you normally would.
This will be the first consideration of ordinance twenty twenty dash zero two in regards to the PAD forbiddance estates. Anyone wish to establish that consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Final discussion or questions?
Thanks, Grant, for that clarification. I should have voted aye on the previous motion.
Tracy.
So, Mayor, can I, so, um, I actually agree with Chris. I'm pretty sure that Mr. Cameron is probably okay with things. But if the staff can't get him to sign off on it, then we need to know ahead of time so that we can all kind of process that, maybe slow things down and let people kind of work things out a little bit. Uh, it's just, it's a little difficult to sit here and, and kind of talk about things and kind of sort these things out because things are flying around on the screen and you know, and normally we wouldn't have probably got this far down the road, and we would probably would have been reading with Chris initially. If the staff can really kind of nail that down a little bit, make sure we know one way or the other before the meeting.
Brian, that's a good point, and, you know, you, all of us, frankly, you know, hold weird hours at work. Um, and we don't, can't always read an email an hour before council meeting. Um, so I'd just like staff to consider that moving forward. I know you guys do your best, um, and you don't send these as surprises, but just, you know, um, maybe consider the timing of, of these things. If we, if it seems to be hurried, it probably is, and maybe waiting two more weeks might uh, might be better the next time as well.
Tracy, take roll.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Harrington.
Aye.
Pollock.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Upon reconsideration, we have five ayes, no nays. First considered pat, uh, considered passed. You have the second and third readings as you can still work on this, people, if you need to, just like any other ordinance. Any other new business? If not, we stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, team. Good work.
Alright, folks.